Comments tonight. Hearing is staying done, well, welcome everyone to tonight's meeting and consider the approval of the agenda.
So move.
We'll call the roll.
Star.
Aye.
Lumley.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Knighton.
Aye.
Next up then, we have approval of the minutes of our March sixth meeting. Anybody have any concerns or questions on the minutes?
So move.
Second.
Other comments? We'll call the roll.
Lumley.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Knighton.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Next, we have approval of the consent calendar. Does anybody have any questions on the consent calendar items?
So move.
Second.
Any other questions? We'll call the roll.
Pittman.
Aye.
Knighton.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Lumley.
Aye.
This is of the mayor, a couple of things tonight. We have a reappointment of Jeremy Hire and Linda Clemm through to the Housing Board. They have both been on the Housing Board for a while and are interested in continuing in that capacity. Their terms are up. And so we just need a reappointment for Jeremy and Linda and thank them for continuing on.
I would move to approve both of those appointments.
Second.
We'll call the roll.
Knighton.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Lumley.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
The only other thing I just I did pass out some information on the emergency emergency management symposium. It tells the what the kind of the schedule is for that date, April fifteenth. And it also talks about the self-paced training that you have to do in a couple of virtual meetings. Which have yet to be scheduled as far as the times. So it is quite an extensive course, but it kind of. Qualifies all the requirements to be emergency management certified or disaster certified, I guess. So don't have to know today, but it would be good to know this week. I think. Just Vogel, who's having in charge of this with the league would like to know a couple of weeks ahead of time. So I would think hopefully by the end of this week, if anybody's interested in doing that, let me know. And I'm planning on going and we'll see who all wants to go and. Get registered. So then we'll move on next to the public hearing on the max levy for fiscal year twenty four. We'll open that hearing and you know, we have an affidavit of publication, Jenny.
We do, your honor.
Have anybody received any written comments?
I have none.
I have none.
Any oral comments tonight?
Moved close hearing.
Second.
We'll call the roll on closing the hearing.
Star.
Aye.
Lumley.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Knighton.
Aye.
Hearing is closed, so we will next then consider resolution twenty three twenty three, which is approving the maximum. Tax dollars for certain levies for the city's proposed fiscal year twenty three twenty four budget discussion.
Yes, so this was the public hearing on the max levy, maximum levy. Not to be confused with the full levy of the city that we'll be looking at later on. But the max levy is came out a few years ago and is designed really kind of to show. The change changes in tax dollar collection on the vast majority of our levies, all of them except debt service. And a couple of other voted on levies. One of them being the aviation authority, other one being the library levy. So those are not included. So what we what we're looking at here with the the max levy is it kind of what does is it kind of it shows you last year's certified budget. So it shows you the total valuations, what we asked for in dollars to be received and how that equated as far as a levy rate. And then what they do in the second column is they, you know, hold all that amount that we asked for steady. But change the actual valuations to what the new year is. And for us this year, that number for valuations is down. But what we're asking for is largely held the same, or we could hold the same. If we were able to hold the same, I should say. And that shows a change in levy rate from thirteen eighty five to fourteen thirty eight. Then if you look at the last column, it shows, okay, so what are the new valuations with the new amounts that we're asking for, which. Implement the limits, where we have limits and any other changes we had within the other levy rates. And that actually shows a levy rate of fourteen dollars and thirty six cents. So what they're looking for here is they want to be, it was designed for transparency to say, okay, well, you know, we've kept the levy rate the same. So we didn't raise taxes. Well, maybe your valuations went up and you're collecting more, but you still have the same rate. So that was the kind of idea and the intent behind this. And actually, as it works out for us, we're showing a negative increase, negative point one six. It's what's going down. And point one six percent. Now, if you have a two percent or larger. Growth there, that would require a super majority by the council. So four to five would have to vote in favor to approve it. But this year, again, with the valuation decrease that we're seeing here for the second year in a row, we're actually seeing a decrease in that percentage change. So. With that, I guess we'd just look to pass that resolution that would approve the total tax collection on the max levy. Levies for three million, five hundred seventy one thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars.
I would move to approve resolution twenty three twenty three.
Second.
Any questions, Steve, or?
I thought you guys did a really good job. Having our hands tied for the second year in a row. I got an article coming up and I dubbed this budget season kind of like last budget season as as the no frills budget. There really isn't any frills in there. I like the the path we went forward with on retaining some of the key folks in positions. Also continuing to to make strides in. And then some of our discussions on on the Emerald Ash Bore. Continuing to make improvements in the sanitary and water department. So based on what we had to work with, I thought we did a very nice job on this. You really look at it, though, from where we were last year to this year. Cost wise, costs have gone up enormously across the board. And I I think I think we've done a nice job to to like, like I said, it's a no frills. There's nothing in there exciting about the vac truck. I think that's probably the most exciting thing to talk about. But other than that, I'm glad to see we put some money aside for the. The the nuisance abatement piece. Based on Philip's suggestion, and I like the direction we're going with trying to get more of the Emerald Ash trees down. But again, I say you guys did a nice job on the budget. Just next year is going to be another interesting year. Really, if property evaluations continue to go down, less tax base to work with. How do we continue to provide the same services we do today? It'll be very interesting.
You can only shuffle it into fur so much.
Yep.
Any other comments? We'll call the roll.
Lumley.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Knighton.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Right, like Patrick said, a lot of we're getting to the budget, but. I think it turned out as best as possible. So very good. Next, we have resolution twenty four twenty three, which is approving the facade application for Burrito Express. I see Mark's visiting us remotely tonight. So Mark, you have any comments?
As discussed last last week, we have a facade improvement grant application from Joe Alvarez at Burrito Express, seven hundred Riverside Drive. He is requesting one thousand, six hundred dollars in grant funding to help put up two new signs on the Hot Shots Building. Which Burrito Express is within is a business within that business. One side will be in the south wall, the second side will be in the north wall, visible to the parking lot.
We had. Owner was here at our workshop and kind of explained his reasoning for this and kind of. What he was. Planning, so. Anyone have any further questions of Mark tonight?
This is being recommended by your board.
It is. Design committee has reviewed it and is recommending approval.
We have funding for this.
It'll be coming out of the Culture and Entertainment District Fund, as discussed last week. The two that and the facade improvement grant fund. They're really one pot of money that's split and as we need to, we can cross back and forth. So the facade improvement fund allocation has been expended for this year until July first. There is money, there's about fifteen thousand dollars remaining in the Culture and Entertainment District Fund.
Based on the approvals being met, I would so move.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll.
Pittman.
Aye.
Knighton.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Lumley.
Aye.
All right, well, tell Joe good luck, Mark.
He's chomping at the bit, ready to go. So thank you very much.
All right, let's go on then to resolution twenty five twenty three, which is saying the public hearing on the fiscal year twenty four budget discussion there, Steve.
Yeah, so now that we've held our max levy hearing, we can move forward with the full budget. And so what we're looking to do here is set the public hearing on the full on the entire budget. For our next regular meeting on April third at six P M. And so fiscal year twenty four budget, and we kind of talked about that a little bit here before. You know, until we're seeing valuations that are they're lower again from last year. Keeping fingers crossed for next year that they tick upwards. They got to at this point. But 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 with that, so we're you know, we're looking at, you know, decreased revenue that's come in. And and if you, you know, as we reference kind of our our total levy sheet comparison. Last year, we 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 leveled the total total amount of four point two three two million. This next year, we'll be looking to levy four point one six two. So again, that number is down again this year. That's taking us from a levy rate of sixteen twenty to a levy rate of sixteen fifty three. See, the A I S sheet's a little bit off. It's sixteen fifty, but it is sixteen fifty three. So that would be the total next, the max levies, as well as the additional aviation. Library and debt service levies all put together. So with that, we'll look to set the public hearing for our next regular meeting on April third.
I would so move.
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
I guess I'll also say that, you know, we've got until the end of April to get the budget approved due to the residential rollback change that the. Legislature was voting on and taking action on. So they've given us extra time. Otherwise, it's end of March.
So what timeline are we looking at to to be have a bow put on this and out the door?
Should be April seventeenth. Should be our meeting to approve. And then if for some reason we can't approve that night, we'd have another week and a half or so to have a special meeting.
So the hearing will be on the third. And then the approval will be on the seventeenth.
Right. And so once we've set public, once we've ever published and set public hearing, I mean, we can change the levy rate. We just can't increase it. So if we want to lower it, we can do that, but we just can't expand on it.
Any other questions? We'll call the roll.
Knighton.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Lumley.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
All right, so we'll have that public hearing at our next meeting. Next is consideration of the third reading of ordinance one one six three. Ordinance amending and updating chapters one fifty eight and one fifty nine. Just on property maintenance and inspection of licensing and inspection of rental properties. Discussion here. Said.
I can take that.
John, Brad, Hugh.
I can take that and you can.
Multiple choice.
Chip in if you'd like. The primary changes we're making to chapters one fifty eight and one fifty nine are to update. The International Property Maintenance Code. I believe we are currently utilizing the two thousand twelve version, and this will update us to the two thousand twenty one version. So we're adopting by reference the twenty twenty one version. And then in conjunction with that, Code Enforcement Department added a few more. Sections to section one fifty nine point ten property standards. Which were previously adopted elsewhere in our code, but are just clarifying that these also apply to our rental properties. So not particularly substantive changes, but just updating our. Code moving into, I guess, prime enforcement season.
Discussion, questions for Brad?
I think we had a pretty lengthy discussion on this at the planning session. And. I like the proactiveness in this and. From a rental. Standpoint, you you've got ninety percent are that do a fabulous job and you got the ten percent that struggle with it. And I like I like the enforcement, make sure everybody's on the same sheet of music with us.
So move for the third reading of ordinance eleven sixty three.
Second.
Anybody else with any comments, questions? We'll call the roll.
Star.
Aye.
Lumley.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Knighton.
Aye.
As an adjunct to that. Well, first of all, we'll have the third reading, sorry.
Okay. Ordinance number one one six three and ordinance amending and updating sections of chapter one five eight, property maintenance code. And chapter one five nine, licensing and inspection of rental properties to update uniform code provisions adopted by reference.
Thank you. Now. In accordance with that, the Housing Commission has been, you know, doing a lot of things to look for. More housing in our community. And one of the committees that we have is to. Continue to improve and to up up maintain the existing housing that we have in our community and to upgrade that and and keep it vital. And so in accordance with this one, chapter one fifty eight and one fifty nine, the Housing Commission is going to hold a. Meeting with landlords in town and anybody else who's interested. And that will be March thirtieth, which is Thursday evening at five thirty in the Zastro Room. And so we encourage all landlords to come to this because what the Housing Commission is not looking to. Chastise landlords. We're looking to work with landlords so that, like Patrick said, we have, you know, many landlords who are very good landlords. We have some who we'd like to step step up their game a little bit. But this Housing Commission is looking to work with landlords to make it better for them so they can improve on their investment. Because this is their business and how can they improve their properties to be, you know, a better business for them even. Working with things as one of the Housing Commission members brought up, you know, a lead or a contract that the landlord would have with their tenants. With expectations for the tenants that, you know, so that when when things happen and they don't have any kind of documentation of what's required or what's expected of their tenants. Maybe there should be some kind of a contract and different things like that. So how can we work with these tenants? And what are the things that they would like from us to help them with? And then what would we like from them to help? Help the city to maintain our existing housing in a good and even better condition? So Steve, does that pretty much cover that? Do you would you say, or?
Yeah, yeah, I think that really, that really sums it up. It's it's designed to be a session that kind of, you know, get together and kind of, how can we help each other? And, you know, like you said, we're not trying to, you know, come down any landlords. We want to be able to facilitate and help them. And so it's really the Housing Commission Task Force that's putting this on as opposed to the city, putting it out there. But, you know, we're the, you know, we're the tool, we're the ones that are there to enforce it. But it's really what's driving this is, you know, the community. We just want to have a, you know, improved looking community, so.
So I encourage any council members, if you have availability that evening to come hear that discussions. I think it'll be a good back and forth between the Housing Commission and the landlords to help each other, so.
Could you repeat that date?
It's Thursday, the thirtieth of March at five thirty and across the way in the Zastro Room at the library.
All right.
Yep.
All right, then we'll move on to. Consider motion to adopt and publish ordinance ordinance eleven sixty three.
That's so move.
Second.
We'll call the roll when she gets done writing.
Lumley.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Knighton.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
All right. Next, then we have resolution twenty six twenty three, which naming the city bank depository discussion here.
Yes, so every three years, we put this out for bid with the local banks to see who might be interested in being our official depository for the city. And actually, this year, we heard back from all four banking institutions in town. And we got quotes back, it's the first time we've gotten quotes back from all four of them, is my understanding, in quite some time. So that was that was encouraging. But we basically, in in reviewing those those bids, many of the things services offered were very similar. Really came down to, I guess, you know, what what interest rate they were offering on our accounts. And the top two were first security and. C U S B. We've we've banked with C S U S B for a number of years. That's who we're currently work with. And their interest rate was four point nine five percent. And for security, it was four point nine seven. So four point, so first security was was just two ticks higher on the percentage points. But even with that, we felt that it would probably be worthwhile to stick with C U S B. Just because there would be so much involved in in changing banks and accounts and everything that goes with it, that it really would make up for that. That that two hundreds of percentage point difference. So our recommendation would be to. Approve the quote from C U S B and continue with them as our official depository for the city of Charles City.
It's nice to see the bank step up. I would so move.
Second.
Any other questions? We'll call the roll.
Pittman.
Aye.
Knighton.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Lumley.
Aye.
Next, we will consider resolution twenty seven twenty three approving the preliminary plans and setting public hearings on the twenty twenty three sanitary sewer lining project. John, are you going to take this one?
Yes. Well, last last week's planning session, we talked about this project as well as the line sanitary sewer lining, which allows us to rebuild. Our aging sanitary sewer lines without having to dig them up and incur the cost of removing and replacing pavement. So this year's project is we've divided into a base bid with two alternates. Base bid will be Main Street, thirty three hundred feet from Riverside Drive to North Grand. And this will be done this year. Before next year's Main Street project. Then alternate one is on Jackson Street from Riverside Drive to Spriggs. And alternate two is on North Grand from Hewland to Ninth. The two alternates are sixteen hundred feet in length and nine hundred feet. So the project has a completion date November seventeenth. And resolution twenty seven twenty three, what that does, it sets the public hearing. January six o'clock on April seventeenth. As well as setting the security, ten percent for bid security amount. Also, just add that the bids will be held, the letting will be held on April thirteenth. So we would recommend approval of resolution twenty seven twenty three.
Questions for John?
I would so move.
Second.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Knighton.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Lumley.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Bob, this one may be of interest to you when you were talking about parking ticket fines, but. This is the first reading of ordinance eleven sixty four, amending the Charles City Code of Ordinances, Chapter seventy, Traffic Code Enforcement Procedures. And Section three, Parking Violations, to increase the fine amounts for uncontested violations of parking restrictions. Chief.
Chief Anderson, we based this on, or I based it on, our discussion we had had in the previous talks here at the council. The only thing different is the two hundred dollars for the disabilities one. And that I raised because I'm looking through this. I had missed that previously, and that's what the state has done. It's raised it up to two hundred dollars to reflect that in our code, so.
You know, we we discussed this earlier, and I think that. This will kind of bring us in line with other other communities and, you know, with the. Increase for the disabilities parking permit fine. I think that's that's good to kind of reflect that. State code there. So I would move for the first reading of ordinance eleven sixty four.
Second.
Just for the public clarification, we were currently at fifteen dollars for our parking.
Fifteen across the board for normal parking and also for snow ordinance parking. And then one hundred for disabilities parking. This would raise it up to twenty five for a normal parking ticket, whether it be on across the sidewalk on the wrong side of the road or in no parking zone or yellow zone. Anything like that would go to twenty five, and then it would go to fifty for parking during snow removal time. And then to two hundred for improper use of a disability's parking space.
Thank you.
I like this. We had some lengthy discussion when we reviewed this in our workshop. And I think. We're we're we are now going to make money instead of covering the administrative side of this. And I did have a question now. On on the snow removal, is our businesses. Also in line for that, or is it just residential? Because I went, the the last one we had, I had to help an elderly lady who about fell coming out of Dollar General. And this had been well over twenty four hours since the last, that sleet ice mix that ended up being about an inch and a half, two inches.
Okay, I think if I'm not mistaken, what you're referring to is probably the sidewalks.
Yeah.
Okay, this will just be for parking.
Okay.
The fifty dollar fine.
Right.
The sidewalk actually is under our code enforcement. That's under the one fifty eight. And that actually, then what we do is we follow a different procedure for that. It's not a ticket. We have to follow the code for that. And. I guess probably a different time, but I can discuss that with you, how we do that. And then we actually, instead of just the direct fine on that, what we do is have somebody actually clear the snow or ice at that time.
Okay. So what I would like to have that conversation. Thank you for that. So just just for my own knowledge point, though, it's it's business and residential, though, that are.
Correct, for the snow removal on the sidewalks. It is. In fact, we probably. I can't tell you if we've hit more one way or another, but there are some businesses that have had, I guess, the walks queen for them.
Right. And and the one, there's one in particular, it's just the proximity to a senior. Residential units there that has my concern, so. But I'd love to have that chat with you sometime. Thank you.
Any other questions or? Question. All right, we'll call the roll.
Star.
Aye.
Lumley.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Knighton.
Aye.
All right. Very good. Well, then we'll move on to any miscellaneous course. Well, no, we first have to have the first reading. Yes, first shift to have that first reading.
All right, ordinance number eleven sixty four and ordinance amending the Charles City Code of Ordinances, Chapter seventy, Traffic Code Enforcement Procedures. Section three, Parking Violations, to increase the fine amounts for uncontested violations of parking restrictions.
See, I keep trying to take away your thirty seconds of fame by not letting me read this. All right, very good. Well, now we'll have miscellaneous, anybody received any miscellaneous correspondence of anything this since our last meeting?
I was talking to Steve earlier, just I know ambulances is on everybody's mind. And I had a couple cities reach out, wanted some information about. Looking at it either from a county or municipal standpoint for the EMS Essential Services Levy. So provided a good hour, hour and a half dialogue with the city of Grundy Center and Baxter, Iowa. Two different, unique situations, but in reality, they're kind of in the same position as we are. So. My takeaway is, is that this is ever growing concern, not only for Charles City, but for many, many, many. Cities within the state of Iowa. So wanted to pass that along.
Very good. Anybody else? Anybody else, anyone? Brad, anything else to report tonight? Jenny, anything for you?
Nothing for me.
Our next planning session will be the twenty ninth, is that correct? I mean, not next Wednesday.
Yes.
Which is the twenty ninth?
Yes, yep, at five o'clock.
Five o'clock, correct. Anything else, Steve, on your agenda tonight?
Um, actually, um, I have noticed here, there's a couple of things we didn't have on the agenda that we probably should have. That was, that was the, uh, the V F, the V F D drive on the, on the water plant. Uh, we had that failure there, we talked about it at our workshop, then we had those three issues. And that sanitary sewer line where one was filled with asphalt and the other one was collapsing and. And so one was a about a twenty five thousand dollar fix and the other one's about a twenty thousand dollar fix and. And that's a, that's above my threshold for approval without your guys' consent, but in cases of emergency. You know, I wish that could almost be determined to be that, um, I guess. We'll see what Brad has to say, I'll give him a few moments to consider this, but. I'd like to be able to move forward with making those repairs and and, uh, getting that done. Um, with that, the twenty four thousand nine fifty on the V F D and the twenty thousand dollar. Somewhere, Corey thought it'd be somewhere under twenty thousand dollars for that sewer line work, it'd be. Nice to know if we could have the consensus from the council to potentially go forward with that. And then put this on the agenda for our next official meeting for you guys to officially approve in a rear, I guess. Brad?
Yeah, without it being on the agenda, I I think we'll have to include it on. Next meeting's agenda or perhaps even the planning session, you know, have have a special meeting for the planning session to approve it. The twenty ninth, I don't know, um, what the timeline is on that, but. Uh, you know, under the circumstances, I think we've moved forward in the past with. You know, emergency work and had council approve that after you've coordinated to have the work completed, so. Um, it's, I think, I think that's the best we can do in the circumstances is perhaps have it on the twenty ninth, that's a special meeting. For approval.
But you say with the ability to start to make the planning, to do it under an emergency. Situation or potentially emergency situation.
Right, do you know, or they plan to start on that here soon?
Um, we just want to get moving on as soon as possible and all reality, they probably won't be here to do the work until we have that next meeting.
Sure.
But to be able to. Be moving forward with reach, reaching out to them and coordinating, I I'd guess that have to cut, talk to Corey to find out exactly how soon they could do it, but. I'd be surprised if they'd be able to be here by Wednesday. Because it's, while it's a potential emergency situation, it's not a situation where. A sewer line is backed up and we can't do anything, right, I mean, it's, and we have three wells, this is one of our three, so. Um, it, I suppose it could wait. Just one of those things you don't want to wait around not too long and.
I think we'd be almost negligent waiting, I think we need to step up and go forward with that, I don't know that we have to have a special meeting, there's. Additional costs involved with that. You know, let's do it when we. When we get to the next regular scheduled meeting, take care of it, we opened this up at the last workshop. And had a really effective and large discussion on it and there weren't any alternatives that made sense then. And there aren't any alternatives tonight, and for this to get worse and create an absolute emergency with something blocked. Makes less sense than moving forward and getting it fixed, so. Right, and we're under any sort of bid or quotation threshold with those dollar amounts, so that's not an issue.
No.
That, that would be, I guess, where I'd really like to see us go, let's just get it done and we'll take care of the, the clerical end of it when we get there at the next. Meeting, meeting.
I'm also in favor.
And the, and the regular meeting is only. Four days after the planning sessions, because by and such, it's on the twenty ninth and the first next meeting is the third, so. It's only five, you know, three business days difference, so.
Yeah, I I guess I I would feel better if we could get moving on those now or not later, because it is, this potential issues. I could. Like you said, kind of by this, if there's somewhere to revise that way, so, okay, appreciate that, we'll have that on the next. Agenda, um. Another thing I was going to mention is, so we talked also at the last meeting about the wharf, about accepting that project as being complete. Pending those last few documentation pieces to come in and I know, um, we kind of talked over on Thursday, I wasn't here Thursday, but I. I know the consensus on feedback from Brad was it'd probably be best just to hold off on that. And officially approve that once all those, all those things are provided. And so we had that, we had that discussion with, with Lance and the contractor and they're totally fine with that, so that's, that's why you didn't see it on the agenda tonight. So, and to that end, Lance, um, and I spoke today and he says they've gotten a lot more of those pieces in this, but they're still waiting for a few of them, so. So they're almost, almost done with that. Um, also wanted to mention too that, you know, we're kind of working through some issues right now on, um, on the li- library, there's a project to redo the flooring in there. So we're kind of working through some concerns we had over the work that was done there and working with the contractors for look to. Uh, repair and and, uh, um, finish up that project, so we'll be working through that. And lastly, I'll mention that, um, I know. On Thursday, I was, as we were traveling in Chicago and eating lunch at Chick-fil-A, I saw an email that came through from, um, Senator Sandy Solomon. Uh, reaching out to the board supervisors in the city, I'm not sure who was on that, on that email, maybe you guys were on that email, Mayor, you probably were. But just, uh, kind of reiterating the, the, the new bill proposals that are out there. And looking to get feedback on how that's going to impact us, so, uh, so it's nice to. Get some outreach there to be able to provide some feedback on how some of these potent, changes could potentially impact our community, so.
On that note, she and Representative Thompson are going to be here this Friday. For a legislative event, did you know that?
Oh, no, I didn't know that, okay, great.
Get you the information on that, I think it's at noon on Friday.
Wonderful, that's, that's all I have.
Anybody have any other board or commissioner committee reports to report on tonight?
Do we have a ceremony planned for this, uh, piece of pipe for the wharf, the pad poured and?
Um, the ceremony would be smiling faces from the D N R and a big draw that we get from. The S R F and about to the tune of about, I don't know. Was it thirteen million dollars, I think, um, actually, now that you say that, we did, we did get. Um, final approvals from the D N R official today saying that, uh, well, first they said they're still waiting on some pieces, but. Of information, but it was verified that they've received all those and so they said they're okay, they're good to go with all the compliance things, so it's just matter of. Closing this thing out, so, but yes, we should, we should, we never did have our, 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 uh, mobile workshop a couple of years ago at the wharf. It was under construction, we did everywhere else, so that should probably where we should have a meeting.
I'd actually like to, if we can, now that the weather is getting decent, if, you know, if we can dedicate a workshop or something to, to go tour that. To see it firsthand in the E Q basin.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yep. It's pretty cool stuff, really.
Anybody else on any committee reports? Not to a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Show me how to split that screen. Or rather not have myself phone out. They do the read. Absolutely.